Good evening. This time, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Norfolk City Council meeting, March 3rd, 2025. I'd also like to inform the public about the location of the Open Meetings Act posted in the council chambers and is accessible to members of the public. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause). 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 (Applause).
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnson.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Beckman.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
All right, at this time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing numbers, items number eight and 11, and adding those to the regular agenda.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second. Motion second, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, I need a motion to approve the full agenda, adding eight and 11 to that full agenda, and removing item number 35. I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, now on to our special presentations, I'm assuming why the room is so packed right now. So, I didn't know if you all came here tonight to listen to the rest of the meeting, but if you did, that's great. Anyway, we'll start with our first proclamation. It'd be Problem Gambling Awareness Month, whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling has designated March 2025 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, whereas problem gambling is a public issue affecting millions of Americans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds, whereas problem gambling has a significant societal and economic cost on individuals, families, businesses, and communities, whereas problem gambling is treatable and the treatment is effective in minimizing this harm to both individuals and society as a whole, whereas numerous individuals, professionals, and organizations have dedicated their efforts to the education of public and problem gambling and the availability and effectiveness of treatment, whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling invite all residents of Norfolk, Nebraska to participate in Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Now therefore, I, Shane Clausen, Mayor of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim that this month of March 2025 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to support the National Council on Problem Gambling in their efforts to mitigate gambling-related harm nationwide. I don't believe we have anybody here to accept this proclamation. If we do... I'll bet you no one's here. No.[230.12][230.12](Laughter). All right. Next proclamation, make sure I've got these in the right order. Here. Okay, we're going to start off by honoring the Norfolk High School Girls Bowling Team, whereas the Norfolk High School Girls Bowling Team has demonstrated outstanding dedication, teamwork, and perseverance throughout the 2023-2024 season, and whereas the Panthers achieved an extraordinary 30-2 season record showcasing their skill and determination on the lanes, and whereas the team dominated the Class A State Championship Tournament, going undefeated in the championship round and securing Norfolk's first-ever girls' bowling state title, and whereas through their commitment to excellence, sportsmanship, and relentless pursuit of victory, the Panthers displayed the highest standard of athletic achievement, bringing pride and recognition to their school and community, and whereas this historic championship victory stands as a testament to their unwavering teamwork, strong work ethic, and support of their families, coaches, and the Norfolk community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Shane Clausen, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, along with this Norfolk City Council, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Norfolk High School Girls Bowling Team for their outstanding achievements and celebrate their 2025 Class A State Championship victory. Way to go, girls.[319.12][319.12](Applause). Councilwoman Sue Beckman's going to come up with me, and we're going to go out, and she's got a special person on this, a team, so she wanted to go in.
(Applause). 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 (Applause).
Thanks, Mayor, Council. I'm also going to ask Shane Wyden.
Oh, Shane Wyden's on his way up, too.
Scott, do you want to come up and join us?
And Scott Cordis is on his way up, too.
Kind of sprung that on you last minute.
We've got three chiefs up here.
(Laughter). I apologize for whatever these two say, but, no, I appreciate being given the opportunity to speak, as you probably saw in Consent Agenda, that Dr. Andrew Linus, there's a resolution in place to bring Dr. Linus on as our full-time medical director. Dr. Linus is here this evening with our team. We're very fortunate that Dr. Linus was willing to step up and step into that role, and we're also very fortunate that Dr. Cerber's going to stay on as our Associate Medical Director and continue doing his thing. What's very special about this year is Doc hit 50 years this year in this capacity, and that's truly remarkable. And these fine gentlemen, who I consider mentors and role models for me, spent a lot of time with Dr. Cerber, more than I have already, and I've been here 20-some years, and he's probably tried his best to steer all three of us in the right direction in some capacity, and I think for the most part, we've listened, but I'm sure it hasn't always been easy on him. He's sworn in more medics than we can count, trained more firefighters than we can count, and not just here, but regionally. His impact on emergency medicine in Nebraska is unparalleled, quite frankly. I'm just extremely blessed to call him a friend and want to give him the credit he deserves this evening. I also do not want to forget to thank his wife, Susan, who has been by his side the whole way, and has been a great supporter of ours, and we're just grateful that they're part of our family, so, while these two fine gentlemen, to add anything if they'd like.
You said it all, Chief. Yeah, I mean, between us three and, got another one right over there, Mr. Dooley, and several others that are out in the audience and live on TV, I'm sure. Dr. Cerber, you know, Chief said it all, but he's trained a battalion of EMTs over the years. I mean, he was there from the beginning, when we were loading and going, like we used to say, you know, and scooping them up and shipping them out, and transitioned us through that basic EMT and EMT Defibrillator Certification, EMT Intermediate Certification, and then into Full Advanced Life Support. So, he truly is, truly is an amazing physician, a confidant, a true mentor, and a true friend, so, job well done for Dr. Cerber. He's made Norfolk Fire what it is in many, many ways, so, that's all I got.
Doc, I'll keep it short and sweet. I've always been proud of you. I've been proud to know you, and I'm grateful for the opportunity in my life that I got to experience just a little bit of Doc Cerber, because I'm a better man because of it, so, thank you, thank you for honoring him tonight, well-deserved, well-deserved. Thank you.[773.93][773.93](Applause).
I started in Norfolk in 1975. We had a border health at that time, but it no longer exists. 1975, about 1980, or '79 actually, I walked in the fire station and said, "Can I help?" and they said, "Yes." So, I've been helping ever since. And pleased to have been given the opportunity to have been all I can do to help Norfolk Fire be what it is. So, I thank the city for allowing me to do that, and thank everybody here for being here. Thank you.[833.87][833.87](Applause).
50 years of dedication is a lot for our community, and we really appreciate that, and you made our community a safer place because of it, and anybody who's had to utilize an EMT service at any time should probably think back and thank you for all the dedication you've put out there for all these years. Thank you.
Dr. Cerber, I just wanted to take a moment, this is Councilman Jensen, thank you for what you've done for our city, but also, all the things that people don't know you do that I do, whether it's the scouts, or all the different things that you've done, and the boys you've mentored over the years with your canoeing trips and all the stuff you do. You, in 1975, you set my broken leg. You were brand-new. I was, Dr. David was supposed to do it, and you did it instead, so, that's what, you don't remember, but that's, I remember you very explicitly, and all through scouting and everything else, so thank you for, not just what you did for our municipality, but for the community as a whole. You're a great man, thank you.[920.12][920.12](Applause).
This man and I go way back. Back when we both were pretty young and were dumb enough to canoe every river in this state together. The Eagle Scouts he made, he is an Eagle Scout, I'm an Eagle Scout, he was the Scoutmaster Troop 122, I was a Scoutmaster Troop 120. Great man, great citizen, also my personal doctor, and that probably helped a lot, too, over the years, but unbelievable man, great for this community, his whole family has been, and they really need another round of applause. Great man.[971.37][971.37](Applause).
After all that, it's kind of disappointing to get started with the regular part of our meeting. It was kind of inspiring there for a little, for all that. All right, so we're on to public hearings and related action. Yeah, so at this time, we're going to open this hearing for discussion through number 20, from item 25 through item 31. So on to number, item number 25. Well, yeah, with, yeah, we're going to formally open the public hearing for item number 25 and 27. All right, item number 25, public hearing at the request of Dial Sunset Mall LLC to consideration a zoning change from C1 to C3 on the property addressed at 1710 Market Lane. Yeah, Val, I'm going to defer to you on this.
All right, thank you, I'll start this off. Why we opened 25 through 31, they're all semi-related. The first one is the zone change, and I've put it up here on the map, so you can kind of see what we're talking about. Just to the right is the Sunset Plaza Mall, and this is the old Wells Fargo Building, and so that is the property that we're discussing tonight. It is currently C1, which is kind of a low-intensity commercial, and they want to go to a C3, which is more appropriate on a large highway like this, and also with what they are proposing to put in their drive-throughs and such, that is permitted in C3 where it would be to be a cup in C1, so it just kind of cleans up the property in general with the zoning. And then the other items, you will get into also of like the land swap and the plat, because for the final one, a plat will actually cut this essentially in half, so that there will be two separate lots. Jeff Ray is here as, for the applicant, and also other staff can go into more detail on the land swap issues.
All right, well, we are open for discussions, so any questions you might have.
Council Mayor, I'll introduce item 27 as it's related to this, so, as part of this, and Val's kind of drawing up here a picture of what's happening, so the red box would represent the existing site that's owned by Dial Properties. As, when they approached us and talked to us about the redevelopment of this site, there was an interest in getting rid of that remaining portion of, oh, I can't remember the drive now, Market Lane there, and so as we, as we worked with them on this, I had an interest in preserving our ability long-term to make that a three-lane road through there on Center Drive with the configuration of the drive into the nursery, the configuration of the access to Graham Tire, and then anticipating a westbound or southbound on Center Drive, trying to make a left turn into this new redeveloped area, it made sense that at some point, we're going to need a third lane through there to accommodate left-turn activity. So, as we, as we had those conversations, it ended up that we proposed, between working with the developer and trying to find what was right for this site, we proposed a land swap where we would acquire some additional right-of-way along Center Drive, and then in exchange for that, we would swap out a portion there of Market Lane. As part of that swap, obviously, they would take out all of the concrete associated with Market Lane, even if it's not inside that square, they would be required to take out all of that, all that concrete, and do a little bit of restoration in there and some seeding. The, Jeff will be able to talk about this more, this will be split into two equal-sized lots, and it would be an access, there'll be an access coming in off of Center Drive, directly centered on the lot line. It will not go all the way through to the mall along there, they don't want traffic cutting through there to go into the mall, so it's an approach into what would be two different sites there. So, that's kind of an intro. Jeff Ray is here representing the developers, and he can, he can walk you through and answer any more questions. And I can answer any questions, too. As we get into some of the details of the agreements, Dani would be the most familiar with the details of the agreements, and she can answer questions around those.
Thanks, staff, I appreciate it. This project has taken a little time coming forward, and it's got some complexity to it. We originally just talked about redeveloping and putting one potential drive-through there, started looking at, and there was quite a bit of extra room, and it just made more sense to be efficient with your existing infrastructure you have there, adds additional value and other opportunities for you to have additional fast food. And started through that process with Val and Steve and Dani going through that, and then Steve brought up the land swap and the idea of putting center to three lanes and taking five feet off of that northern edge, I'll call it the northern edge, even though it's not exactly directly north, and then looking at vacating that portion of Market Lane that goes nowhere right now, and is obviously very close to 275, and doesn't really work with your traffic pattern, and is from the safety perspective. So, from the redevelopment side, we looked at this and said, "What are the best opportunities here?", and that's where these pieces started to fall together, and we worked with Dani to help try to draft the proper order to get everything to go in from a zone change. Originally, we thought, "Well, we'll just keep the zoning and then do a CUP", and then I'm like, "Well, then we're doing another CUP on the other side, and it doesn't make sense, so let's just change it to C3, like the adjacent properties, and not have to worry about all of the conditional use permits, and going through that multiple-step process." So, the zone change, you can see before you, it was actually two-zone change, so there's zone change on the Dial Properties piece, and then the Sunset, for Dial Property Sunset, and then the zone change on the city piece. The reason we're doing that, obviously, is we have the land swap and then the plat, and so eventually, we want zoning over the entire property, but we just need to get everything in the proper order to get that steps put into place. It's a little bit complicated to get all the way to where we want it to be, but I think we've got a good solution to get there, and so, I can answer whatever questions you may have for us at this time.
Jeff, I do have a question for you. So, Steve mentioned that there's a drive that's going to be between these two properties. How many ingress egress will you have from this? Is it just going to be one area, or will there be any to the sides?
On, I'm going to show the plat, yeah. At this time, the main ingress egress will come off of Center. Lot 2, that lot there, will also have access, and there is a reciprocal easement for traffic and parking on the mall side that benefits both properties, so they can get access off on that far northeastern side, as well on that one. The lot 1 may have an access, but likely not, would likely just be self-contained and have the one access. The reason being is there's some pretty significant infrastructure in, kind in the way down there with transformers and so forth. There's also a water line that runs diagonally through the middle of this, under the building currently, so as part of the redevelopment process, we would propose, you know, a new easement and a new water line that we would work through engineering on to get that relocated along the property line, to make these two lots buildable and allow that to function efficiently.
So, in other words, lot 1 has one entrance.
That's what's proposed at this time. We're not all the way to the site.
Lot 2 has two. My concern was two fast-food restaurants trying to come out of the same one location.
Yeah, so lot 1 has one, lot 2 has two, yes, with one of them being shared.
Thank you.
So, there'll be a proposed building on lot 2, then? Is there a proposed building to go there?
Yes. They're currently in negotiations with two different establishments.
And for lot 1, the existing building will be used for?
The existing building will be removed.
Oh, will be removed, okay.
The existing Wells Fargo will be completely removed and regraded, so it works for both lots.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another discussion. Discussion from the public? All right. Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 19th, 2025, to consider a zoning change from C1, Local Business District, to C3, Service Commercial District, on property addressed at 1710 Market Lane. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a 5 to 0 vote.
All right, thank you. That closes our public hearing, and we'll be moving on. Yeah, for 25 and 27, we'll be moving on to item number 26.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5919.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Val, you'll be leading the discussion on this. Okay. Short title, please.
A second. Give me a second.
Do we get it? I thought we had a second.
I got a second.
Yeah, we had a second. So short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. That being said, we'll need a vote on the first reading now.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5919 carries on first reading.
Hearing no opposition, I recommend that we suspend the rules and then move this ordinance on second and third.
Second.
Two seconds over there this time, Corey. All right, okay. Okay, all right. First, and we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion from the public? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5919 carries on second and third.
All right. Now we are on to item number 28. Need a motion to consider approval to acquire property located at 1017 Market Lane.
I'll offer for consideration the approval to acquire property located at 17 Market Lane.
Second.
Motion of second, discussion, please. Steve, I guess you'll...
I don't want to point to Dani.
Dani's going to take this one? Okay.
Yeah. So this is just another step we have to go through. Nebraska revised statute 18-1755, that covers when you're acquiring property, and so that's what's going on here. It's both the sale of property and the acquisition of property, and so this is just another step that we have to go through.
Any other discussion? Discussion public? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay. On item number 29, consideration ordinance number 5920 authorizing the conveyance of property located near 1720 Market Lane.
I would offer consideration of ordinance number 5920.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Again, this one's... Jeff, Steve, who wants to handle this one?
This is, so this is again another step. Nebraska revised statute 16-202 covers conveyance of property. So in order to move on to the next steps, this will have to be passed on all three readings tonight. Following the approval of this, there is a 30-day remonstrance period. So all of the, at the end of the 30 days, assuming this is passed on third reading, all of the documents associated with these agenda items will be sent down to the county for filing.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Discussion of the public? All right, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to authorize the transfer of city property to provide the terms of transfer and authorize the mayor to execute and deliver a quitclaim deed to the property to provide for remonstrance to said transfer as provided by law, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5920 carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass on second and third.
Second.
All right, we have some discussion? Discussion of the public? Right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5920 carries on second and third.
Okay. Item number 30, consideration approval of a land swap agreement with Dial Sunset Mall LLC, a Nebraska limited liability company for property located at and near 1710 Market Lane.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm guessing Jeff, who's talking on this part? I got notes up here, but doesn't seem to be jiving with where I'm supposed to be.
That's okay. This is another extra step here. I mean, maybe not exactly necessary it is an extra one, but in terms of when you're filing things, the county and record-keeping and just tracking, and so we can, you can see what was going on and how this transaction took place, that it was a swap, it just helps to add more detail here especially. So this is just another item that'll be filed with the county at the end of the 30 days.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Discussion from the public? Right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, on item number 31, consideration of resolution 2025-10 approving the final plat of the Sunset Plaza subdivision second edition.
I'll offer for consideration of resolution 2025-10.
Second.
All right, a motion of second, any discussion? I'm asking who I'm supposed to point to, I guess.
You want to fight over it? Okay. This is just the final plat approval for this. What's going to be changed within this plat is going to be the piece that's going to go to the city that right-of-way, that's going to go over to the city.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Discussion of the public? Right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2025-10 is adopted.
All right, this moves us on to our regular agenda. Earlier on, we moved item eight and 11 on to the regular agenda, so we will start with item number eight. And that would be consideration of acceptance of the Parks and Recreation Board report from February 10th, 2025. And Nate, I would ask you to speak on that. We need a motion and first, though.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Give me a motion of second. Now we're ready for discussion, Nate.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. The board report, I'll just go over the few items that we had on the agenda at the last meeting. This was the, one of the items that we did discuss was the recommendations for CIP budgeting priorities. These are the items. It's kind of the dream list, and they kind of helped me prioritize it, so I know what to enter into the CIP budget, which is what we're doing right now. So we went through that process, and they gave me their thoughts and ideas on that. I gave them my recommendations, and they did approve a recommendation for that, and we'll be going through the CIP process now, and that's what we're doing actually this week. For me, it's due this Friday, so we're working through that, and you'll see those recommendations through that process. We also looked at the purchasing of the Tahoe property. That property is now available for sale. That's east of McKinley Avenue there on the east side of the park, and we're waiting for a seller to make come and offer to sell, and if we can, we'll bring that to council if they do bring that forward. The board does support that and has their recommendations, so we will bring that to council if that comes up. We don't know quite yet. And then the other one is the RFP for the exclusive beverage rights. Those are up in 2026. Those, right now, we get $1,000 a year for having, selling Pepsi products in our facilities. We're going to go out for another RFP to renew that contract, and that'll also come to council here shortly, once we get that written and get that together. So those are the three items that were recommended by the board. All three will be coming to council at some point in the future.
Any discussion? Any questions?
Nate, do you have many people that put in for this RFP for that, for that privilege to sell?
I wasn't a part of it the first time around. Maybe Lyle could answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, I'm Lyle Lutt, the operations manager for the city. We did this seven years ago, five, six, seven years ago as well, and we did have a couple submissions. It's a little bit challenging because it's not exactly a dump truck or something where we get X amount of horsepower and this many cubic feet and torque or whatever. Each provider has their own package that they want to deliver, so it's a little bit of a challenge to break it down. Any other questions about last time? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nate. Any other discussion? Any discussion from the public?
I just thought it was important to talk about these items in light of the fact that, I mean, there's $5 million of CIP items, $10 million of partnerships and grant and donation items, $66 million of visionary projects, that there's a lot of dollars here, and sometimes I hear at a meeting, it's in the CIP, therefore, it's kind of already approved. And so I think it's important to understand that it says acceptance of this board report and the recommendation, so I just want to make sure we're understanding whether this is acceptance of these as they are. I understand they have to go through another process, but I just think it's important to have that discussion, that these are very preliminary and that they may not go in the CIP. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Nate, you want? Okay.
Yes, this is, that we're talking about with the board is our dream list that went, as we went through the master plan process, kind of what the community, what they would like to see. But that's not going to fit in our CIP as we go through that process, but we, so we have to pick the real needs that we have in our community, and that's what we present. And by the time it gets presented to you, it's what our needs are and what we're looking for, you know, what our community has said that they want. But we also know that there's some things that are wants and not needs, and we try to, try to work through those with the Parks and Recreation Board, and I think we're doing a pretty good job so far. Hopefully, if there's anything in that process that you want to see changed as we go through it, I'd be happy to hear from you, and we'll be obviously talking about the CIP coming up shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Bring this on to item number 11, consideration of approval for the purchase of a John Deere 1600 Turbo Terrain Cut Commercial Wide Area mower with the two post-folding props for the amount of $67,000 to replace our existing aging mower, which is no longer cost-effective to maintenance and has become unreliable. Need a motion of second on that?
All right, move, we, for consideration approval of purchase of the John Deere Turbo as presented.
Second.
All right. Got a motion of second, discussion, please. Nate's up here already to talk about it, so.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Tonight, before you, is consideration for this, for a new mower. It is a replacement mower. This is for Skyview. The old mower is designed for, it's a smaller mower, designed for smaller acreage. We're trying to get a mower that does have, that does, that can help us mow 175 acres out there a little bit quicker than we are able to do currently with our current mower. The mower that we are replacing did have a $1,000 repair recently, and it is a bypass of the emissions control. So when it goes this time, we would have to replace the engine, and so we're on its last leg, and it is a six-year-old mower right now that we are replacing. So we're hoping this new mower, because it's larger and it'll last twice as long, we're hoping to get 12 years out of it, because we're mowing less hours on it, so we're putting a lot less time on the equipment. So that, the current mower, like I said, that we're replacing has been, has worked through six seasons, and we're hoping this one will be 12. We're also looking at replacing a $30,000 mower. Again, if it's not lasting, if it's only lasting six years, you're still spending $60,000 over the same period of time. It's also important to say that it's going to help with our staff savings of about 375 hours per season, and I don't know if there's any questions. We did have a budgeted amount of $75,000 in Keno funds, and we got the price down to $67,000, which is below the Sourcewell contract pricing. Any questions?
Nate, what's going to happen to the old mower? When, if we get the smaller?
The old mower, we would put it on auction, is what we would do.
So it'd be worth something?
That's correct, yeah. As long as it's still running, I think we'll get something for it, yeah.
Nate, so you said 300, it's going to save 370 hours of mowing time during the course of one season?
Yep, for the whole year, yes. It's about 26 weeks.
Okay.
Yep.
So labor savings is probably $15,000 to $18,000 with the machine and man?
Yep, you know, at $20 an hour, yeah, you can do the math there.
Sure.
Yeah.
Nate, I looked at this, and I guess, I guess my question to you is, are we, are we able to justify the cost of this machine only using it a half a year? I guess I would have liked to see that we were able to get a factory cab and possibly a snow, a snow broom or a push blade, and we could keep the trails open at Skyview, because I understand this is going to be staying at Skyview. Is that a possibility to have this a dual-purpose machine where we use it year-round versus just, you're saying 26 weeks?
Yep. I did get an answer from just before the meeting, and we were, that particular one is only, the decks can't come off, so it's just for summertime. They wouldn't be able to put a plow on it or anything to do snow removal, unfortunately. So we would not be able to do that.
Do we want to look into that sort of option? I know you negotiated the price on this already. I mean, would it be smart money to look into that option for having a dual-type mower that can do both?
Yep. So we do have those on our smaller mowers. So we do have, we are requesting, we already have that in our budget for next year to replace a mower. There's a smaller mower that has a cab that can have a plow, but the bigger mowers are specialty mowers, and they're just designated for that. At least this one in particular is.
I suppose if you want to get 12 years out of it, mowing snow with it, it's probably going to pull that back. So now, if you have one mower going down, potentially another mower going down, which mower are you going to use for piling the snow? Do you have another one ready to roll for that? I mean, if you're predicting that two mowers are going down?
Yeah, the mower that we're replacing, it doesn't do snow removal. It's just for mowing.
So the mowers you currently have will be taking care of the snow removal, then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Discussion from the public? Anyone? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, we're on to the packet portion of the agenda, of the regular agenda. Item number 32, February sales tax report. This would be December sales.
That's correct.
And we need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
All right, a motion of second. Rainey, I'm going to throw this over to you for discussion.
Yes. Last month, Norfolk's sales tax receipts were 13.3% over budget. That was the first month this fiscal year that sales tax exceeded budget. I was hoping we might see the same thing this time. I was speculating that corn prices bottoming out in late August and then rising through the end of the year might help improve our sales going on out. I also thought the general election in November might have had some positive impact, so I was really hoping I'd be able to say February, we're up, but instead, we were down 3%. 2% of that decrease we planned and we budgeted, it was due to a $23,000 LB75 or 312 refund, and we get notified a year in advance of those refunds by the Department of Revenue and reduced our sales tax budget accordingly. So as a result, our receipts are down only $11,000 or 1% below budget, but they're still down. For the first four months of our fiscal year, our receipts have generally followed the trend of other first-class cities in Nebraska. This month, we kind of broke with that. Most of the other first-class cities, with a few exceptions, had their sales tax increase. Aces was down a little over 7%, Nebraska City a little over 13%, but most of the other first-class city's sales tax receipts increased from prior year. I gave some examples in the agenda packet, but unfortunately, like I said, we broke with the trend of following in general what other Nebraska cities, first-class cities have been doing. Fiscal year-to-date, our sales tax receipts were $161,000, a little over 3% less than budgeted. I'd answer any questions?
So that was 3% for the first four months, correct?
We're down 3% for the fiscal year.
For the first, the first, yeah, the first, okay.
Yes.
Any questions from the public on this? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Right on to item number 33, consideration of approval of the purchase of 41 replacement Glock pistol firearms, the Keisler Police Supply for $42,298.88 for use by the Police Division.
I would make the motion.
A motion of second. Discussion, chief, we'll be giving this to you, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Brian Ty with the Police Division. This was originally on the consent agenda. This was originally on the consent agenda, but we understand the need for transparency regarding this investment. We have our range instructors here tonight. They're not only teachers, but they are also Glock armors. They do the inspections and repairs of our equipment. Also tonight, I was asked to speak about critical needs within the Police Division as far as equipment. I have one pressing need, it's for additional body worn cameras. When we initially purchased our in-car cameras and the 31 body worn cameras, we spent $215,000 of the 240 allowed on the capital improvement budget. We have a good problem. Due to positive growth within our division, we now require nine more cameras. These cameras will cost about $11,000. I don't have the exact quote yet, we're waiting on that. But this will still be under the expenditure, or this expenditure will still be under what the original budget of the CIP, and it'll ensure full coverage for our officers. These investments are vital to maintaining the safety, effectiveness, and readiness of our officers. We appreciate your support, and we're willing to answer any of your questions. I could have those instructors come on up here and explain the gun purchase.
Chief, real quick, you said that you need nine more body cams to cover what you currently have.
On top of what we currently have, nine additional ones.
Right, so is that going to make you, are you like fully staffed then, or are you going to need to?
We're not fully staffed, but with the part-time officers we have, and we have four that will be starting March 19th, and we have to have some in backup, because the batteries will expire sometimes, depending on how much use within a shift, so.
I guess that was my question, if that was enough to cover if you have something go down, or?
I think we're going to be in real good shape with 40 of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, thanks for allowing us to, or giving us the time to speak to you all tonight. We're here basically hoping to take consideration of allowing us to get new handguns, duty handguns. Our duty handguns are 10 years old, that seems to be the life expectancy across departments throughout the United States. Just various use and wear and tear on them, 10 years seems to be about the life expectancy of them for duty use. We're, we're transitioning to 9mm handguns from 40 caliber handguns. If you're not familiar, it's a much easier platform to shoot, especially for shooters who have never shot, females, or just anyone who has never shot a handgun before. We're also transitioning to red dot sights on our handguns instead of iron sights. It allows us to be more proficient shooters, our qualification scores go up, and it just builds confidence for those people that have never shot handguns before, or are just not confident behind a handgun. Some of the things, these were purchased in 2014, the ones that we currently carry, they're purchased in 2014, so they're going over that 10 years old, and some of them are starting to show some signs, some significant signs of wear and tear. Some officers use them more, some officers use them less, it just kind of depends, some of us, like us firearm instructors, we get to go shoot more, obviously we have to be more proficient with the handguns. So, you know, we're not, you know, looking, we're going on our end, you know, our handguns are significantly more worn and, and worn out than some of the other officers. The thing with the red dot is it gives us a huge advantage of low-light scenarios if we encounter a deadly threats scenario, and it gives us that confidence to be able to do that in low-light situations. Basically, it's, it's kind of like technology, it evolves, same thing in the firearms world, it's, it's evolving, and, and we want to stay on top of that, too. So transition to this, cost is approximately $42,000, I don't have the exact number here with me, but we do do a buyback program within our department. Every officer gets the opportunity to purchase back their firearm, and if there's extras left over, they can purchase those back as well, and we're expected to get back roughly $12,000 with that buyback program. So it would bring that number down to roughly $30,000. Another thing with that is we're not starting from scratch, we do have two of those handguns already, me and Officer Fryer have those. We've been trying to get into a red dot instructor course, basically gives us a certificate that says that we're able to, and certified on training people with the red dot. So we got those a little early. We also have the ammo for the 9mm, because we were planning on swapping to those when it was approved initially, we're planning on swapping to that, so we basically got it down to the number for the amount of ammo that we would have to have left over for the 40 calibers to get us through, and then, so this kind of happened, so now we're kind of in a bind. Now we have four people getting hired, or five people potentially, and four of them got to go to the academy. We have enough 40 caliber ammo left over to get those four people, or five people through our in-house training. We don't have enough to get them through the academy, so now we got to go and spend more, not more, but we got to use our ammo budget for this year to buy ammo for our old guns, if that makes sense, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Want to say anything, guys? Like I said, we're not starting from scratch, we have a lot of our stuff. The other thing I would note is the date, from the date of the order, we're looking at 200-plus days to get them. So it's, it's not like it's an overnight thing, we don't just get the, you know, order them and get them in a couple of weeks, it takes some time with that. If, if, we're looking at 200-plus days, I mean, we're looking at close to fall, I mean, end of summer, fall time before we would get them. So anyway, purchasing the Glock 9mm handguns with the red dot sight now is a necessary step for us, I hope you all take it into consideration, and like, we appreciate having the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight.
Sounds like this is also not only, it's a, it's major safety upgrade.
Right, it is a huge safety upgrade. You know, our night sights that are on, I say night sights, they glow in the dark, basically, it's two, three little dots that glow in the dark, those only last about 10 years, and they are starting to fade, some of them you can't even see it anymore. The red dot sights that we have, they have a battery life from the factory for three years, so every three years you have to replace the battery. Now, we're not planning on doing that, we're planning on replacing them obviously sooner, because that's a safety hazard if batteries go down. We're still able to see backup iron sights with them, so it's not like if the red dot goes down, or for whatever reason, we don't have iron sights or ways to, to, you know, shoot. You know, there's, there's a multitude of reasons the red dot is a significant upgrade on our handguns.
Right. This is all-inclusive with your extra clips also? I know you're talking about sights, and they're coming with the sights put on there, but?
Yes, so when we order from Glock, they actually come directly, Glock mills the slides, and the optics mount directly to the slides, whereas if you went and bought, purchased a handgun and put a red dot sight on it, you'd have to put an adapter plate, or you'd have to pay a machine, a machinist, or a gunsmith to mill the slide out, which is an extra cost. Glock does it from the factory for law enforcement, and it does come with our magazines and everything that we need.
So those additional items you're talking about, that's kind of why the cost is a little bit higher?
Correct, correct, yeah. The, the actual, just the cost of the handgun is, it's like $526, I believe is what it is from Glock, but the optic, that is what is the extra cost.
And are you anticipating then to, your ammo cost may go down throughout the course of the year?
Correct.
From buying 40 caliber to 9mm?
Correct, 9mm ammo is significantly cheaper than 40 caliber, that is correct. So the buyback, oh, sorry, the buyback program is that you can buy your own, your old gun? Correct, yeah, our old duty pistols, we're able to, allowed to buy those back.
Any other discussion? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Any discussion for, oh, sure, come on up. And thanks for signing in.
Shut up. Please.
Please makes a lot, yeah.
David Janz, I think it's great you're replacing your guns, I think that's fantastic. I question your cost, have you ever heard of a blue label company called GT Distributors?
Yes.
Okay. With a iridium sight, which apparently now I know you're not getting, they're only $5.66. The gun alone, if you take the iridium sight out, is only $3.98. But if you?
Which optic is that?
That's with a standard optic. With the iridium, which is?
Which red dot sight is that that you're pulling?
That's an iridium, you said red dot, so if you look at a red dot sight?
The Trigerton SRO specifically is the one that we're?
You're looking at Trigerton?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's really not a red dot, that's an illuminated sight, but that's, it's just terminology, and that's fine. What they're offering is, what did I do here? AmeriGlow, and they only added a, I had it all up, now I screwed up. Anyway. So you're not talking a laser sight?
No, no, no.
All right.
We're talking a red dot sight that mounts on top.
Right, right, I know, I know exactly what you're talking about, but there is AmeriGlow's iridium sights, and they're only $127.
Yes, so, so from Keisler Supply, which is another law enforcement distributor, this had been settled prior, they had contacted GT, someone else that was in the decision-making process of this, was contacting distributing companies. They contacted GT, they contacted Keisler Supply, Keisler Supply was the first company to get back to them, and the price that they have for just the handgun is $5.2630. That's just the handgun, that is not including the red dot sight that mounts on top of the slide of the handgun.
But I'm showing that their price at $3.98 from GT Distributors for a Glock 45.
Okay.
Blue level price.
That's blue label price, that's different than, that's, that's not the same as?
All officers have the ability to buy it at blue label price.
I was going to mention that, too. Blue label pricing is for individual officer purchases, not agency purchases. Yep.
Okay. Then that's really not fair.
I'm not disagreeing with you on that. The total price I have of the handgun with the Trigerton SRO, which?
Comes in about $10.31.
Yep, that's exactly what it is, and, and if you order it, whether you find the Trigerton SRO on whatever, whatever firearms website you want to go through?
They're the best.
They're about $600 now.
Yeah, they're the best.
That's what they are for, if I were to purchase one myself.
But when you said red dot, to me, I interpret that as a laser sight rather than an iridium sight.
Right, no, and, and so?
And you're talking, I know what you're talking about.
These are true red dot sights, these are, we still have an iridium illuminated front post sight on the handgun.
Okay, so that adds, cost of it anyway.
Right.
Okay, thanks for your time.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Don't mind to state your name and sign in, and we'll begin.
David McCart. I'd just like to mention, it's important that we recognize that a lot of law enforcement agencies are switching to 9mm. There's a lot of reasons why. Norfolk has seen that, obviously, ammo price is a lot cheaper. Also, officers having comparable weapons, highly important. So we have a SWAT team, Massacre County and Norfolk Police Department, we have two different caliber handguns. That don't make a lot of sense, does it? We have two agencies working together, so if I need something from Norfolk, they don't have it. So this is what's going to happen here in the future, you're going to start seeing a lot of agencies switching to these. Yeah, they're, your quicker sight acquisitions, like they said, they're, they're easier to run. We started with 45s, and that takes, that takes a lot of skill, it's a bigger caliber and a lot more kickback. So I think it's great that they're switching these, we need to look at what everybody else is doing, too, because if we're in a mutual thing with State Patrol, prime example, too, they also have 9mm's. So we have to keep comparable with everybody in our, our area, so I think it's great they're doing this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Right, we're on to item number 34, consideration of ordinance number 5921 amending section 24-64 of the code to restrict parking on the east side of Square Turn Boulevard from Benjamin Avenue to Alaskan Avenue, and on a portion of the west side of Square Turn Boulevard to allow semi-trucks to access the north entrance of 1500 Square Turn Boulevard.
I move consideration of ordinance number 5921 on first reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second, some discussion here.
Mayor, council members, on February 10th, 2025, the Public Services Traffic and Infrastructure Subcommittee reviewed on-street parking on Square Turn Boulevard near Marathon Press, it's 1500 Square Turn Boulevard. Due to frequent bottlenecks caused by parked cars on both sides, it was decided to restrict parking on the east side from Benjamin Avenue to Alaska Avenue. After the meeting, it was noted that semi-trucks struggled to access Marathon Press due to parked cars on the west side directly across from its north driveway. A review confirmed that parking restrictions are also needed on a portion of the west side to improve truck access.
Mill box are on the east side, too, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. I think this is a, this is a safety conscientious thing to do. If you've ever drove that road after 7:30 in the morning till about 5:00 in the afternoon, it's hard to get two cars down that lane. I think this is a very safety conscientious move to have parking on one side of the street.
So on the west side, chief, would it be just along Marathon Press's property line there that we would restrict?
West side, there would be parking all along the west side, except across from that north driveway.
The north driveway, okay.
Any other questions? Further discussion? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 24-164 of the official city code to restrict parking on the east side of Square Turn Boulevard from Benjamin Avenue to Alaska Avenue, and on a portion of the west side of Square Turn Boulevard to allow semi-trucks to access the northernmost entrance to 1500 Square Turn Boulevard, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance and pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5921 carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second, third readings.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5921 carries on second and third.
Right, item number 35 was removed from the regular agenda. We will move on to item number 36, consideration of ordinance number 5922 authorizing issuance of combined utility bond, revenue bonds, in the principal amount not to exceed 17 million, to fund improvements to the sanitary sewer plant and the west water and water system.
Offer for consideration, ordinance number 5922.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we're not going to discussion, Randy, you'll be leading. Sorry, Randy, you'll be leading us on this discussion?
Yes. This bond issue is budgeted, we've got $15,965,407 of bonds in the current year budget. $3,535,000 of these bonds are in the sewer fund for improvements to the grit removal facility. $12,403, $12,403,407 are in the water fund. West Collector Well is $5,180,000 of this. The west well pipeline to get it to the plant is 1.8 million. West Water Treatment Plan improvements are budgeted at $1,670,407, and a 2 million gallon finished water storage tank at $3,780,000. These improvements will be completed next fiscal year, and an additional bond issued is planned to fund next year's improvements. Because this will be a competitive sale, the bonds can potentially be sold at a discount, requiring a greater part amount of bonds to provide the same proceeds. That's why the ordinance provides for a principal amount up to 17 million. I think it's more likely that these bonds will be sold at a premium. I think it's more likely that these bonds will be sold at a premium, which will result in a par amount less than the fifteen million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand budgeted. Piper Sandler will be the city's financial advisor for this bond issue, and we've got a representative Bruce Leffler from Piper Sandler here tonight who can answer questions if the council has any on this, as well as myself. This is a twenty-year bond issue with a five-year call provision. Staff recommend passage of this ordinance on all three readings, so we can proceed with the bond sale. Included, uh, information in the agenda packets, um, comparing our debt to other, I know in other Nebraska first-class cities and also Lincoln and Omaha. The, uh, first chart in the agenda packet shows debt as a percentage of assessed value. The second chart shows debt per capita. For Norfolk, we have two numbers included in these charts. Red bar on the charts reflects Norfolk's bonded debt on October one, twenty twenty-four, which is the same, uh, date as the other cities in the chart. There's a green bar on the chart that's also for Norfolk, but includes the fifteen million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and seven dollars of bonds in the proposed combined utility bond issue. For the per capita debt calculation, we use the most recent Census Bureau of Population estimates as of July one, twenty twenty-three. And the assessed valuation chart uses the twenty twenty-four assessed values, which is the most recent assessed values. Norfolk's bonded debt as a percentage of assessed valuation is one point seven two percent as of October one, twenty twenty-four. Adding in the proposed bonds brings that up to two point three four percent. It's in the lower half of the cities either way. Debt per capita as of October one is sixteen hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents, which is in the lower half of cities. Adding the proposed utility bonds brings it up to twenty-two hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, putting Norfolk in the upper half but close to the middle with eighteen cities having lower debt per capita and thirteen higher debt per capita. Also included in the agenda packet is the city's debt coverage ratio for our combined utility bonds for the last ten fiscal years. For our last fiscal year, it was six point eight five. After issuance of the proposed utility bonds, it's expected to be over two point eight, which is more than double our required debt coverage ratio of one point two five. Answer any questions? And like I said, Bruce Leffler is also here.
Any discussion? Discussion from the audience?
Jim McKenzie, um, I don't expect to affect the vote on this at all, but rather discuss it as part of the larger cost of living issue in, in Norfolk. Um, I'm not sure that I understand for the message or the implications behind those debt charts, but I do understand this. Citizens care about how much they pay. They care about how much they pay in taxes, and they care about how much they pay in water and sewer bills. City debt will go from twenty-two million in fiscal year twenty twenty-one to sixty-four million in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. That's an increase of just under three hundred percent in four years. Our debt service expenditure category on our twenty-four, twenty-five budget increased by almost twenty-one percent in just one fiscal year. I did some calculations on principal and interest payments, and Randy can correct me if I'm wrong, but sixteen million dollars of debt at five percent interest over twenty years equals about one point two six seven million dollars. If my numbers are correct, and we expect water and sewer revenue of nine point nine five million dollars for twenty-four, twenty-five, the principal and interest payments on just this debt issuance will consume just under thirteen percent of our gross revenue. I'm not sure what the percentage of our net revenue after operating expenses would be, but obviously I would expect it to be much larger. Our capital improvement plan calls for just under sixty-eight million dollars of water and sewer debt issuance in the next ten years. How will that affect our water and sewer utility rates? That's the most important question that citizens care about. I simply think we need to look at all of this, including the twenty-two million dollars of water and sewer improvements that will be paid directly out of revenues on top of the debt issuance over the next ten years, and make sure we're making wise, fiscally responsible decisions and take into consideration the economic impact on our citizens. There's a limit to how much their cost of living can increase before they're about, they're forced to evaluate their options. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, I got a question, Randy, um, not to put you on the spot, so I'm sorry. A while ago, uh, we discussed a little bit about the city's position on overall debt. Are you able to remember where Norfolk ranked? I seem to remember a discussion that overall, as far as the city's overall debt, we were kind of in the middle of the pack as far as other first-class cities of our size. Does that sound accurate to you?
Yes, and that's reflected in the charts that I include in the agenda packet where, yeah, however you wanna, you gotta have factor population in there, but on a per capita basis, we're currently in the lower half, will be moving into the upper half after this bond issue. On assessed valuation basis, we're in the lower half, uh, even after this bond issue.
Okay, thank you. And I just had one more, uh, question. This is maybe for Chad to kind of help clarify this, but, um, yeah, or, or Steve, excuse me. So this will drastically improve the quality of our infrastructure overall and the ability of our system to deliver those services to, to citizens. I mean, this is something that is, is a, a need that we have of where this money is going. And I think it needs to be on the record that there's a cost for not making these kind of investments as well when you look at the future of the community. Uh, and anecdotally, uh, recently I've, I've had some discussions with other cities around our area who are, uh, suffering from water quality and water pressure issues. So I think Norfolk is very fortunate that we don't have those problems. The faucet turns on well, and we're all very proud of that, and the hard work that our uh, public works, uh, employees do every single day to make sure we have that service. So I just wanna make sure that, uh, for the record and for the public and council that we remember those things as well when you're looking at these projects. And I think Chad might touch on a little bit of the quality issues and really what we're getting for our dollar here.
Yeah, Chad Roberts, Water Sewer Director. Andy, you are correct. Um, the, these projects were noted in the Water Sewer Master Plan. Um, we've been talking about these projects for about three or four years, and this will improve the water system along with having the ability to continue to expand with a growing community, industrial interest, items of that sort. So.
Something else I might also point out, uh, just because we have a project in the CIP doesn't necessarily mean that we'll actually do that project. For instance, there was a lot of discussion last year about the Omaha Avenue Lift Station and the, um, Highway thirty-five interceptor. That's in our CIP, um, I believe, starting construction in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Whether or not we actually do that, I expect will depend on whether or not there's development that would necessitate us doing that, or some industry coming in that would necessitate us doing that, which would bring in additional revenue and perhaps a contribution in aid of construction for that project. So we have things in the CIP that helps for planning purposes. Whether or not we actually do those will depend on future events, and so there's some things in there that may not happen and probably won't happen unless the growth we see in the city justifies that.
I was gonna echo that, Randy, with, with some comments. And Jim, your, your comments are good comments. Um, and as we, I, I would encourage both, you know, both, both yourself and the, the community just to watch the process here as we move through the budget process and, and have, um, budget meetings, budget hearings, or are presenting, presenting our budgets in specifically the water, water sewer, solid waste areas, um. There are, you are correct, there are dollars out there, as Randy expressed, many, in many cases, those are shown currently as revenue bond dollars. And some of these are for, um, I know on the sewer side, I believe there's some conversation in there about a raw water effluent system. I, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but there's probably ten, ten million dollars in there for raw water effluent. Um, that is something that we would only do if an industry was willing to pay for that and was interested in that, but it does show up on our budget. And there are other things like that. Generally, they show up as revenue bonds right now. And, and certainly maybe there's a better way for us to, um, nomenclate that or earmark that within our budget system, and, and we'll certainly consider those options, um, as we go through the budget process, and we do every year. We are very cognizant of our water sewer rates, um, and, and where, where we are with those. I, I know a, a lot of times I like to compare us to other first-class cities that are of similar size. Um, it does give a, um, kind of a reflection of where we are against other communities and what other individuals might be paying. Um, but it also, there, there's a little bit of falseness to that number. We're all very different systems. Uh, we, we have to discharge into different rivers. Uh, we have different discharge, um, permits with, uh, with NDEE. Um, those are managed a little bit differently, community, community. In general, we're discharging against the same permit levels. Um, but they aren't exactly the same. Our plants are all different. We have an SBR system, um, with, with an old activated sludge system sitting in the middle of it. Um, we're, uh, our, our staff out there at wastewater plant, um, they have driven down cost of operation, uh, in terms of the, the volume of material that, that we're processing and what it costs us to do that. Um, and we're continuing to look at those, those opportunities out there. Most recently, we talked about bringing the activate, the old activated sludge system back online is a way to deal with some high-strength waste that's, um, occasionally get, hitting us. Um, and so there's, there's a lot of, I just want to express, there's a lot of really good conversation going on, both the water plant that Chad operates, the wastewater plant that Rob Huntley operates and his crews, um. And we are always looking at ways, uh, to be more cost-effective, um, per unit of discharge that we're dealing with, and, and I think, and I'd be happy to share that information as we go through the budget process and just kind of how we are driving costs down with operations out there. Um, but again, to echo Randy's comments, uh, a little bit under Jim's comments, uh, I think if you were to go through here and add up all the bonding projects, it is painting a picture that isn't necessarily true or isn't true, um, because in many cases, we're gonna be asking for participation in development. You know, if they're gonna be asking for TIF, we're gonna be looking for some TIF dollars to help back on the Omaha Lift Station. Um, that's just one example. If we're gonna get a new industry in and they're gonna be on that side of town, we're gonna be asking for capital contribution towards, towards potentially both water and sewer. Um, and that is not necessarily reflected in the current budget document, so. That's all I have. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Steve, to, to pay for this, we, the increase were six percent, was it year-over-year for the next three years?
We had six and a quarter percent built in year-over-year, and the numbers that Randy is presenting to you right now, so this is, this is the fiscal year twenty twenty-five bond. This is not the total bonding for the project, but we're only bonding this year. There would be another bond coming through next year. We'd like to separate those a little bit, um, just to see, you know, what happens? Is water consumption up? Is water consumption down? Um, is, is sewer consumption up? Is sewer consumption down? So as we see revenue, since those are, those are enterprise funds, they're essentially business units within the city, and they operate as business units. Uh, there's not, there's no general revenue that goes to the water department or the sewer department or solid waste department. In fact, it's, it's the reverse. Those, those business entities or enterprise units of city government kick money back to the general revenue. Um, and again, that is, that's reflected in the budgets, and if somebody would like to visit about that, I can show how that is reflected in the budgets and where that, where that contribution from those units comes back to the city. Um, but again, if, if we're able to generate the revenue, if the projects come in a little under, you know, or just, we've just, uh, awarded bids on those, there's a potential there. One of those, um, might be a million dollars under, so, you know, we'll look at that this year, and that would probably lower, um, those increases, those, those increases that we presented last year, that six and a quarter for three years, you know, maybe we can bring that down a little bit. Um, so again, just a little bit more about the process, so.
Steve, would I be correct if I was to say that our average over since two thousand fifteen to two thousand and twenty-four, if you average those nine years out, our average, if we would have kept an average instead of dip and going, going high and going low, as, as needs are, were warranted, we would be roughly sitting at a normal five percent or five point two percent for our, our coverage on those?
Without looking at, without looking at the actual numbers, um, I couldn't necessarily verify that, but I would say that's correct. I think our historical average in the water department, I think, is around three point five. Is that correct, Randy?
Three point eight eight.
Three point eight eight percent in water, and you have the number in sewer. I know I, I just, Randy, I'd shared those numbers with Randy here just last week or Chad had.
I don't think I had the sewer number.
I think sewer was running right at four percent going back to like nine, right around two thousand. So I would say, just based on my knowledge of those numbers, you know, that water average, historical average of about three point eight eight, I'd say five is probably correct. Uh, we've had some higher years in the last five or six years to adjust for some low years. Um, so it's probably running about five. You know, right now, uh, capital infrastructure has, has just ballooned in the last few years. I don't wanna say it's COVID-related, it's, it's on the public infrastructure site, it's more concrete-related, little bit steel-related. But so much of our public infrastructure is based on, has concrete in it, and in some cases, substantial con- amount of concrete. And concrete price has maybe not quite doubled in the last five years, but it's close. I mean, it's, it's moving at, at big numbers. Now, twenty percent a year, thirty percent a year here for a couple of years, so really big increases in concrete. Um, so when we're doing these projects, um, you know, our, 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 unfortunately, our revenue ask is a little bit higher in terms of those rate increases. The other thing historically is you go back, you know, the, the well we're doing right now, well number fourteen, that's a, a high production well. I think we're expecting three and a half, maybe four million gallons a day out of that. The last time we did this, Chad, you around two thousand five-ish? Two thousand three, so twenty years ago, you know, and twenty years ago when we did that, um, we had a big spike in, in price. I don't remember what it was, eight and a quarter-ish, uh, I believe back then, maybe nine. Um, and so those increases ebb and flow, and, uh, we have had years where we've done an eight, nine, ten percent increase, and then we drop it back down to zero, and, uh, you know, we'd like to see, um, we'd like to see more consistency there. It's kind of our, our long-term goal as we're doing a, we do a twenty-year budget model that we look at.
I, I guess that was my point, is would it, wouldn't it, would it be wiser for us to keep it at a-
Yes.
At a, at a five point five or a five point two percent every year, and then the years that we're down, that's, it's, it's a bank savings for us, and the years that we're, that it's needed, the, the funds are there, and we could keep the, you know, we could keep the rates at a, at a standard, at, at a standard, I guess, rate for, for the, for the tax, or for the rate payer themselves.
I, I think so. I think long-term, um, the sewer, and when you look at our bonded debt and sewer, our bonded debt and sewer is higher than our bonded debt and water, and we historically just can't seem to get the sewer debt paid off, and then we're adding more debt to it, which tells me our rates have just historically been, been a little too low on the sewer side. But long-term, I, I definitely think it's in the city's best interest to kind of look at that three and a half to four percent consistently and, and not dropping below that, because you're always gonna have needs down the road. Um, and then you keep that spike a little bit smaller going forward. Yes.
And I did find what our average sewer rate increase has been, uh, it's been four point two eight percent.
Any other questions? Any else say anything from? Right, seen none, please vote. No, short, I'm sorry, short title, please.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of combined utilities revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-five of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed seventeen million dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of- million for the purpose of paying the cost of maintaining, extending, enlarging, and improving the Waterworks Plant and Water System, Sanitary Sewer Plant and Sewer System, and Solid Waste Transfer Facilities owned by the city, pledging and hypothesizing the revenues and earnings of the Waterworks Plant and Water System, Sanitary Sewer Plant and Sewer System, and Solid Waste Transfer Facilities owned by the city for the payment of said bonds, providing for the issuance and sale of the bonds, authorizing officers of the city to award the sale of the bonds to the bidder, providing the most favorable bid to the city at public sale, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser, and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form. All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5922 carries on first reading.
I would recommend we pass this on all three readings so we can proceed with the sale.
With Randy's recommendation, I'd move that we suspend the rules of second and third.
Second, that.
Discussion? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5922 carries on second and third.
Right, we're on to item number 37, Consideration of Resolution 2025-11 Approving the Authorization of the Relaxation of the Drainage Design Standards for the Madison County Bridge, Project BRO-7059.
I'll make a motion for Consideration of Resolution Number 2025-11.
Second. We have a motion of second, we'll go into discussion. Steve, I think you'll lead the charge on this one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I don't remember the exact date, but about five years ago, we had a similar resolution in front of you. There was an ask to reduce the overtopping design from the city's required 10-year to five years. The county had moved forward with that. However, I think as many of you are probably aware, the state is in the process of remapping these areas, many areas, rivers throughout Nebraska, and they're working with FEMA, and the flood elevation along those is going to be, is going to increase. That increase, with that increase built in, the county would not be able to meet that design standard, and so they're asking to be able to reduce that design standard down to approximately three years, no less than two years. In visiting with the county and others that have local knowledge here, to our knowledge, prior to the 2019 flood, that bridge had not, had never been inundated or overtopped in its history, so we do not have any concerns. If not for being within the city's ETJ, the county would move forward and design it at their, that two- to three-year overtopping that they're anticipating. So attached to the agenda item is a letter from the county indicating such. So I would certainly recommend that we provide the variance on our relaxation of our 10-year design overtopping standard and authorize them to move forward with their design at no less than a two-year overtopping. And I believe Dick Johnson is here tonight as well to answer any questions from the county.
Any questions?
I guess just for clarification, that by lowering their relaxing this from 10 to 3 to no less than 2 feet, we, as a city, accept a zero responsibility if something does happen to the bridge. Is that correct?
Any questions for Dick?
I have questions.
I promise we won't annex it, Dick.
Thank you. To answer your question, I don't believe you would have any additional liability. The main reason being because we're improving what's there now as far as carrying capacity. The other thing that this is going to enhance quite a bit is the safety. I'm sure you've all been out there, and it's basically a right-angle turn on each side of the bridge. But the core kind of threw us a curveball when they came up with this new drainage study. They added about 10,000 CFS in the 100-year flood, which is not going to work. It's all theoretical, of course, but it looks like we can get just a little over a two-year
We had a discussion on this, what, four years?
About three years ago, I think. We brought it into you, we had the same problem, but not quite as much water.
So Dick, is that federal funding that you're getting, that 80%, is that already secured?
It's, yeah, it's, the bridge is being built with 80% federal funds and 20% state funds. There's no local funds involved at all.
And it'll be the same height, will it be any wider?
It'll be wider. It'll, we're, it'll be, I don't remember how much higher it'll be.
It will be a little bit higher?
What's that?
It will be a little bit higher?
A little bit. You know, we're limited on that because of tying into the road on either end, but the other thing we're doing is skewing it differently so that we can make those curves a little more navigable. We have spent a lot of time out there replacing guardrail. Then the flood came along, now we don't have to worry about that anymore.
So when are you expected to start on that?
I don't know. Federal aid doesn't really move very fast. I would hope that it would be bid next year sometime. I think you're, if I remember correctly, when we were having this discussion three years ago, it was supposed to be bid in about late 2023, so, and I don't know what's going on in Washington these days.
Yeah. Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Questions from the public? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2025-11 is adopted.
Considered Resolutions 2025-12 Approving the Mayor's Appointment of Scott Cordes as City Administrator effective March 10, 2025 through the remainder of the mayor's four-year term pursuant on the Section 6-3009 of the Nebraska Revised Status. Or, I'm sorry, statutes. Need to get glasses, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion for Consideration of Resolution 2025-12.
Okay, any discussion? Discussion from the public? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2025-12 is adopted.
All right, on to item number 39, Consideration of Approval of the Employment Agreement with Scott Cordes for the Position of Norfolk City Administrator.
I'll have a Consideration of Approval for a minute.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? Discussion from the public? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, item number 40, Consideration of Approval of the Mayor's Appointment of Tim Rogge as Interim City Administrator effective March 4, 2025 through March 9, 2025.
I'll make the motion for Consideration.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? It's a small little window there, so, anyway, seeing any discussion from the public? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Before we leave tonight, I just want to, you know, this, obviously Andy's last night as city administrator. I'd like to say just a couple things, some on his behalf. Andy was, been the city administrator for the last eight years. He was on the Economic Development Team, he was the Economic Development Director for a year before that, so he's been with the city for nine years. Obviously, we've got a little bit of time to work together here moving forward in the future, and I look forward to those opportunities. I just would like to thank him for his dedication, his hard work with our community. Over the last eight years, you've seen a lot of changes in Norfolk, and a lot of those changes are directly reflected to his economic pursuit within this community, so I'd like to give him a round of applause for that time. So, anyway, we need to adjourn.